Now I'd like to make a motion, we open this meeting.
I'll second.
Would you be?
Hey, member Olson.
Uh, yes.
Member McBride?
Yes.
Member Evan?
Yes.
Chair Pollin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Does anybody need to recuse themselves for any reason?
I don't need to recuse, but I do have a hard spot.
Maybe you should do it instead of do this. Okay. All right, thank you. We're all here. We wanted to devote this meeting to the review of the plans that were different than what we had approved. We originally saw plans look like this, and so we're here to just have a complete review of that. Barrow Architecture did a review of them independent of this and made some notations. These guys are here to cover that in architecture speak and give us a feeling for what they are. And incidentally, I had sort of separated them, you know, blue, red, yellow, and green. Sort of go down. They listed it that way, and I thought if we covered those, we've got a good part of this out. I'll chart it over you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Chris DiMarzo from Fitzgerald Canal Side Properties. I appreciate your time in making this special meeting. I have Craig Jensen with me, Dirk Schneider with me from CJS Architects. They're going to go over the plans with you. I also have Chris Nadler, my attorney, and my daughter Lauren is here checking things out.
So we better be on our good behavior.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it's Craig?
Craig.
Craig, I miss your name.
Dirk.
Thank you.
Dirk Schneider. He was at a lot of the meetings early on, and he's been integral in the construction documents.
Right.
So, thank you.
All yours.
All right, thank you. So, yeah, I think we'll go over the four different, you know, color coded modifications that you've seen basically in Barrow markups. I guess just before I start that, I'm going to be really brief. Sixteen? No? Quick. Oh, quick.
We're not complaining.
No, we want to get through it though. So, you know, when we got the original approval, I think everyone understood that there were going to be some improvements and modifications that would take place. You guys commented about windows and, you know, the idea that we should try and look for some additional improvements in the area of windows. There may have been some other things that you guys were hoping for as well. And in the Barrow letter, I think, you know, they did acknowledge that, you know, the process that we go through going from concept to a set of construction documents like this is going to involve some evolutionary changes. You know, the intent is to make those changes positive, not negative, obviously, and to make it a better project as we take it from, you know, the schematic design to the construction documents. And that's what we intended to do, and I think what we've done, and I think as I walk you through these, I think you will hopefully see that that is the case. I think that short, I think we'll go from there. So, does anyone have a copy of these and you're going to refer to them?
Yes, to start with building, building one.
Actually, if it's, if it's okay, I want to go by, because I'm going to pass this out because it's going to make it a little easier, I think. But I don't know if, you know, it's, it may be a little confusing, but I think it's going to speed things up.
We spent our last meeting going over the windows, because that is, I believe, correct. Like, so from my perspective, I am most concerned about the massing articulations that we change. So in terms of how we deviate our time, I feel like we gave a whole lot of time concerning windows. I don't need to speak to many colleagues, but this is my area of concern, if you could hear your comments.
All right, that's the blue.
Yeah, so.
The hard stuff.
Do you want me to not talk about windows in the meeting or?
Opening to the meeting was a bad wall.
Just, I'll touch them really quick. So the first column on the little sheet I handed out shows, number one of the records on one of those, or not such a thing. Shows the number of windows on each of these buildings on the north, south, east, and north elevations, and it shows where we were and where we are now. And you can see, this is based on our counts, and we have to go through verified, very good count numbers. We had 487 windows before, we have 100 now. If you look at, you know, the comparisons on any of the elevations, you can see where these were either added or subtracted, if there's a concern about that. I can show you, you know, the existing elevations, obviously in the new, and you can look and say, okay, you know, this is what it looked like before, and this is what it looks like now. You know, there are some discernible differences. We don't necessarily think they're negatives, we just think there are changes that have evolved.
And we evolved because we also made better floor plans and it was more efficient, and so some of the windows changed because we're now bedroom rooms, which is a difference. Overall, when there was kitchen, one elevation, maybe it slipped over to the other side, so it was just, you know, from A to B.
So this is a representation of?
This is a color representation of what Barrow reviewed.
Yeah, got it, okay.
So it's just a little easier to look at color versus color as opposed to this. If you want to look at one or another elevation in greater detail. There's more detail on these than there is on those because the drawings involved, you know, sure. Valpies, same way, you know, I just did a comparison of the valpies that we had here in the room, what we got currently. Most of the deletions actually happened on the east and west sides, like where two buildings come together, like where building one, building two block one another. You know, we eliminated some valpies in that kind of central zone because the buildings are pretty close and it just seems a little uncomfortable. We have relationships that close. In a couple of cases, we eliminated a valpi from one of two sides of a room, like we had a valpi on two sides of a living room, you know, with no place for the TV, and it just doesn't play out well, so we eliminated one of the others. But you can see generally similar, although we are down about 12 valpies, I get that most of those are in those interstitial spaces between, between. We can come back to that if you would like. I'm going to go on to materials. So as far as materials are concerned, there are a few changes. I tried in this little sheet that I handed out to highlight some of the more significant ones. So the first one that you see under approval where it says horizontal FC, which stands for fiber cement slash natural wood. We, this is on the north side, we no longer have the natural wood on the north side of building one, but we added natural wood to the north side of building two. You can see the similar color on building two that's highlighted. So we've kind of moved that to the building because we thought having a kind of range of it across the sides was better than putting it all on building one. We did keep it on the east side of building one. You'll still see it says, three lines down in building one, it says horizontal fiber cement, natural wood in the green here, and that's currently what you're saying. You can see it's green across vertical fiber cement, natural wood. So, you know, we traded one location, we kept the other location. Similar with the brick, you know, on the building one, we had brick at a stair tower on the back side, and now we have vertical fiber cement. That was because the stair tower went from a masonry stair tower, like a concrete block stair tower, to a wood stair tower. So now instead, we have more masonry on the base of building three. So we added masonry for this building three, and Barrow picked up on that. They, you know, if you look at these drawings, they show on building two the loss of brick on the stair towers. But then they come back on building three and they recognize the expansion of masonry on building three. So, I mean, I look at it as a kind of a trade, it wasn't necessarily caused that way, because again, the way the building is a wall.
So why was that switched?
Well, it was switched because when we were able to build that stair tower out of wood instead of masonry, the concrete block, there was no way to support brick on all sides of it, whatever it was to do that. So it just made more sense to do the tower out of fiber cement. So we lost it for practical reasons. I mean, really from an engineering view, it was just the more practical way to do it. But then we're building three of all, and we extended this common face across, it made sense to extend the brick that was on the one side of the elevation over to the side. So they weren't linked, but one, in my mind, kind of balances the other. They were linked.
As you're continuing to design, we wanted to make sure that we ourselves would keep the balance of materials, not all of a sudden end up with the.
Yeah, so if you're looking at something, you kind of want to try and get it back somewhere else. It's just kind of just played out that way.
Can we guys just discuss real quickly from the sketch drawings to the construction drawings, the different, the different processes that you need to go through to do that? For example, the structural, the floor plans, all that, can you just talk about that for us? So they understand how you, the reasons why you did these.
Yes, for refining the floor plans, we're recording the structural and mechanical, we're working all floor to floor heights, so they work with the structural. We're dealing with, you know, the flashing between flat roofs and gable roofs, and also the framing thicknesses of all various floors. We're inputting where there's masonry walls versus where there's wood framed walls. All these things kind of tweak the building a little bit here and there, and so then we're adjusting to those things as we go. And like Dirk said, with some of the floor plan assignments, you know, where we thought we had a kitchen and may have shifted, so then we had window changes and things like that. So all these things are tweaking it to a small degree. I mean, I think when you look at these elevations, it's very consistent, but there are changes.
Yeah.
There are. All the green that I highlight under material modifications are unchanged, in my mind, with the exception that we switched some of the horizontal siding to vertical siding. The flaw was that the vertical siding is really more industrial and more kind of barn-like, and a little bit more of a kind of canal site commercial character than the horizontal siding. We still have plenty of horizontal siding as you look through the drawings, but we did change it a few places. So it's not a material change that is either costing Chris more or costing less, it's just a decision we made to try and make it better. More vertical, possible, but there's still a wide range of them. But any of the green highlighted items are what I see as, you know, just not substantial changes, just these minor tweaks to make it better. That's the material, that's about some of the material things that Barrow identified. Do you have any questions about those or those who are out there? Can show you where the natural wood is on the two elevations of your interest.
And I have a, I have a question for the architects. Could you describe, they, Barrow raised an issue with the Parklex wood?
Yeah, remember when I called it natural wood? Yeah, we're looking at.
Describe that, that Parklex, and why it is a appropriate substitute for real wood in this case?
The reason we think it's appropriate is because from a distance, you wouldn't know, you won't know the difference. You have to go up and touch it to really figure it out, and over time, it's going to perform much better, it's going to look good, it's going to hold its color, and the natural wood is going to lose its color and it's going to turn gray or deteriorate over time. So we just think it's going to give you a better overall look, you know, not only on day one, but into the future. That's the reason we're using it. It's not anything other than we think long-term performance is what we're doing.
Is it a, at all as durable as real wood when real wood's painted?
Oh, yes, it's more durable. The finish is integral to the product, so the finish won't deteriorate or fade or, you know, lose its kind of color, and durability is greater than real wood, so it will be there a long time.
Okay.
Questions on materials? This, no? All right, all right, we can come back to that message. Okay, so then the massing and articulation, my last column, requires probably a little more explanation, but I'm going to go with the easy ones first. So if you look at my column there.
For this one, do you mind when you're done to show the?
Oh, yeah, no, I can totally do that. Let me explain a few of them though. So in the kind of red or pink color here, you know, we had a stair tower on the southeast corner of building one that had a flat roof, and we had a stair tower on the southeast corner that had a gable. And we basically flipped them. So you can see the pink southeast stair, flat, goes to southwest stair, flat, in the current, and southwest stair in the yellow, with the gable, goes to southeast stair. So we basically just took the gable roof over here, and it over there, and vice versa. And you can see that.
Building one.
Building one.
Yeah.
So that one, you know, we just, we just flipped them, there's, there's no other.
Well, gable was in the middle one?
No, there was one, it was here versus here. So we basically just took these two and flipped. So that was one of her comments. One of her comments in the green, we have a little projecting bay sticking off the end of the building that was done for structural reasons. So there's this little bay that sticks off the building. This happens actually on building one and building two. It was really done to align our border structure all the way through to the end of the gable, I think.
Or maybe it was other. No, that was the structure in the basement, the thing below. The way to optimize our framing and steel down below, we needed to cover our two joints. Instead of just relying on a cock, we moved the building and road over there. Get more longevity and safety, so the water comes in a few years of the garage level. So we extended that out, but only because we were worried, we were concerned about the volume as well. We only moved it out the one story and put a little bit of hydro on it again. It helps, I think, with that look of an organic growth of this whole development, but it was really driven by the structural framing underneath, where we had joints in the two different countries.
So that one relatively modern. So then the other one that she pointed out were the changes to the gables. In some cases, they got higher, or in some cases, the angles changed, and I'm going to try and walk you through how some of that happened. So in this plan of building one, you can see these little blue dots that are added here and these little blue pieces. Those are little adds to the footprint of the building. And the reason we added those was so that we could get the gable.
Did you have that?
No, this is, I don't have a handout for this, I'm sorry. So, so the reason we did that was so we could get this corner wall, which is a bearing wall, to align with the end here and the end here. But you want the gable basically to rest on this point and this point all the way through. So, well, it's mostly to align, it's to align this edge right here, that point, with this wall that goes right through the middle of the building. So then when you, so, so we're bearing on this point and this point for the gable cross, right? So we add this little space. Unfortunately, you add this little space, your gable gets a little bit taller because now your gable starts from, goes from, not from here to here, but from here to here. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So effectively, we made a triangle, by the triangle, it got a little bigger.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? You made a bigger triangle, so it gets a little taller. So that's one component.
But that's just roof pitch, isn't it?
Well, the pitch stays the same, it's kind of like you have a gable that's like this, and now we, we had, we did that, right? So now my gable is like that because I just added this amount of space. You know what I'm saying?
Which doesn't make it higher.
Okay.
Oh.
You know what I'm saying? By changing the plan dimension by.
So you can just differential here.
Yeah, exactly. So if you don't change the angle.
But that's only if you wanted that.
Well.
It doesn't, it's not have to be, yeah, that's what I'm saying, is angle pitch could be lower.
No, we could lower the pitch, that's correct, and we could, but, so you could do that. You could basically say, well, we're not going to do this, we're going to lower the pitch to get back down to that. The pitch is a standard.
Because that's what's affecting the height.
That's correct. Yeah, we didn't change the, we didn't change the angle, we just did this, which made it higher.
I mean, what I'm just saying, a typical six, twelve, seven, twelve, and not six, seven, three quarters over.
So it's a, it's a standard break, you know, for our roof, right? As opposed to something unusual. And the difference is very slight, but you take this difference and you add it to, we also, in order to get the floors to frame out correctly, we added four inches to each of the floor sections, the framing, right? So each of the floors got four inches higher. So now you've added a foot here, you've added a little bit here, it's a little difference now between flat roof and the gable roof, just to make the flashing worse, like that intersection of those two roofs. So then it can be done like this, they might can be done like this, so you have a little bit of space there. So all these little changes, and these are really little, I mean, this is not much, obviously, you can see it's a very small block, but they all add up, right?
Right.
So that's how our building starts to get a little taller. We did make some other.
What are the ceiling heights in there? So nominally, what would that be, if you, I mean, finished?
Your ceiling height was?
Nine six.
Nine six? Which, you know, would be not.
Across all floors or just the top floor?
No, for all. Not even like powder rooms and other kind of.
Yes, there were dropping if we can.
Yeah. So all those little things add up. And then, you know, we did, as she noted, we made some other articulation changes where we're adding some details and these, those little changes overall height, but, but these things change due to low price.
Those towards the canal commercial look that bind.
Exactly, exactly.
To further your style.
And the ceiling heights, we also wanted to make sure that we have an appropriate ceiling height if those are industrial buildings converted. We didn't have a eight or eight foot six ceiling height, they all were a little bit taller in the beginning, so.
And it goes along with the bigger windows too, you have these big windows that are six feet high, you can't just put the ceiling right at the top of the window, you're just going on a swag.
It's a standard apartment.
Yeah. Nine feet is now pretty standard apartments, standard.
But that's gone up though.
Oh, yeah, no, eight foot, there was eight foot six, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, unless it would be a, you know, maybe, but even if I didn't have, you can add that to your more and more, it's a nine feet. And then with the big windows, you really need a little bit of room above the window for just the trim.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's essentially what happens to these roof heights that go up. In one case, we did change the angle on building two, we have one pitch at essentially 30 degrees and another pitch at like 20, and we raised one of those to make them match. We just thought the 20 looks a little shallow, so we just had a shell and just rock, so we changed that.
So what is the differential when you add up all these little bits?
Yeah, all these little bits.
Piece of paper is very little, but in construction, it's not so small.
Yes, so they do add up. I guess what I would say to that is we're still only 36 feet to the eve, and, you know, then another 10 feet to the gable. So we're below the 41 that the special, special permit required to, you think it was 41 of the eve, you know, that was the special permit.
It's a significant.
So we're still below. This, you know, this series of buildings is further east, so from their own perspective, I'm not saying there's a problem, I don't think there is, but these aren't the ones that back up to the fields, right? Building seven, which is the one that's really over there, doesn't have gables going in this direction. I think number building, no, no, it has.
You're not so three Friday, you're going around, I don't know if that's your again.
If we approve that, do you?
Every time you say yes.
You got to be able to do it throughout the entire project.
No, it's like a little table going in the other direction. It doesn't have any gables going this way, you know what I'm saying? So it doesn't.
By the time we get to that phase, so I'll just reload back in right now.
Yeah. But I think it's fair to say that the, the protocols that you went from, you know, the original plan to this, which reflects all the interior, you know, if you detail, you've done any other building, further buildings are going to reflect that kind of plan.
Yeah, there'll be some. Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I think building seven is only a little different because it doesn't have that transverse gables, you know, it's just going to give it further.
Right, to Kendra's point, that's not the only building that will be seen from all Sullivan Street and High School. So if these are approved at this design and height, then it'll be set throughout the entire project. And then you won't go all the way down to the body of your project with one small little building, seven, that's one. You'll probably add something to it to make it look cohesive across the entire project. So I think that's what Kendra's saying is.
Yes, right.
Yes, these three are tall and they won't affect her view shed now, but buildings four through seven, once set into your phase, will be taller.
Yeah, however, with regards to your specific question about view shed, where we did that view shed study.
It should still be five.
Three feet, and certain sections of the building will not be close to affecting the view shed at the horizon.
Yeah.
From that point.
So throughout the entire project, Bill has been leading the charge on percentage reduction, percentage height, overall mass and scale. So I would like to hear what Bill's thoughts are on this. Bill?
Yeah, well, I, I'm pretty comfortable with everything I'm looking at. I have a couple of questions. I'm looking at the north elevation of building one, and it looks to me as though, forget the gables on the top, it looks to me as though the roof, the peak of the roof has extended, and there's no numbers on my schematic. It looks as though it's higher than it originally was. Can you address that from the ground to the peak? Is it the same as originally approved?
The north side of building, the north view of building one or the north?
North, the north elevation of building one. Left side, ground to peak. And, and there's no numbers on my schematic, so I can't see what it is.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a large gable on the east end, and there's a large gable on the west end. They're both on the railroad side, and both those have gone up a little bit as a result of what I was just talking about in terms of the gable getting a little broader, therefore a little taller, and then the floor floor is getting a little higher, so it's gone up a couple of feet. And, and a ten inches.
Forty, okay, less than two feet, huh?
And one foot.
I think that's what Bill was asking, it's what's a little bit?
So a little bit, no, a little bit is about three feet. By the time you add the floor to floor and the differentiation on the flat roof and the, and the roof right there.
You understand that eve, he's talking about?
Yeah.
I was just looking at the numbers as opposed to a little bit. That's what I was saying, the numbers.
Did you hear that, Mr. McBride, the measurement?
No, I did not.
Yeah. Three feet.
About three feet, yeah, that's kind of what I thought.
It's all cables, it's not at the, you know, flat roofs, those would always go up like about a foot because it's a floor to floor. So on a percentage basis, it's a small part of the overall building, and it's done for practical reasons. I wish we'd known about it before, but like I said, we're still below the 41 to the eve, and we're still below the 10 foot from the eve, so we still meet that.
Uh huh, okay. Okay, I can, I can live with that, and we didn't change the mass and scale of the residential parts of the buildings, so that, that looks good to me. I have.
Is that an assumption or do you guys state it that?
Well, this is the resident, it's all residential. Yeah. No, no, the, the square footage hasn't gotten bigger, correct.
Okay.
Is that, I think that's what he meant.
Yes.
Yeah, how's Bill?
That's, that's correct, yeah. So I, I'm pretty comfortable with where we are.
I mean, the one thing you have until tonight were these color versions of the current plan. So, you know, it may be worth people looking through this to kind of look at it and say, okay, does this really represent the character that we were expecting when we approved this? And I think when you look at these, if you take the time, I think you will find they're better than what you approved. And I would just like to encourage you to think about that. You know, there's cranson windows now, there's more detail in the valpies, there's letters and dowels that I think add to the character, there's more interesting roof configurations.
We have some of our segment arch windows that we.
Right, we've got pergolas on the rooms, we've got all kinds of things going on that were represented in many cases, but they just weren't flushed out in the prior drawings.
Well, and I think that was part of our approval was to add all.
Right, oh, exactly, that's correct. So. And I'm not suggesting you weren't expecting that, I'm just guessing that we've done that.
But we were expecting, I was expecting windows, I wasn't expecting elevation.
Right, I understand. And so, you know, you got to take a little bit of the, you know, kind of positive, what you might perceive to be a negative, but here's like that Parklex or natural wood sign that's, that's coming to building two now. Because this was all one thing before, we had to run up at a higher level of ease, and this isn't right, so we just added that in. Now, we took a little bit off building one when we did that because again, we didn't think it looked right or whatever. So there's still, this element still exists on building one, but there's a slight reduction over there, over here, it's more successful. And I think if you look through these drawings, you will agree, so I would encourage.
Do you want to walk us through the one by one?
I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
Best storytelling.
These seem to be color coded too. These got, is that just the way they are turned? Or is it just white?
No, it's just another, so this is canal side of. No, it's just another, uh, so this is a canal side of building one, where you have terraces on both sides and you have these little kind of rooftop things going on. Where, you know, a little perple up here. We've gotten away from turning the corner on some of these valpines because it gets structurally very difficult. It doesn't really add to the character. We kind of like revealed the corner of buildings. Go to the railroad side of building one. This is where we, I think, flipped the gables on these. But otherwise, you can see transom windows occurring on some of these, some of these windows at the top here. Uh, this is the side facing Monroe Avenue, building one. You can see transoms there, a lot of interest. This color coded kind of natural wood siding or parplex matches the little rooftop piece that's a pergola up there on the roof. And then the building right behind it matches this.
Is that the same thing over here?
That's actually.
Side view.
It's side view, a little addition on the top of the roof, which actually, uh, again, you know, I think more development on, on the sides, just adding more. And you go to building two. This is where we introduced that, you know, additional color on building two, because it was a little bit more nominally. We switched from flabberg or horizontal siding to vertical siding in this location.
I prefer vertical. I agree.
I think the vertical was better.
You gotta have a mix of both.
Yeah. And there is a mix, yeah, certainly, I agree, so.
And it fits well with a mix in it there in vertical.
This is a, another patio, the three.
There's many patios up there. So there's a pergola here for this patio, a pergola for that patio. This guy doesn't have a pergola because he just steps right up. Backside of building two.
Now where south is.
This is east road, this is road, it's on, yeah. Um, and you can see there's some flabberg siding here, so this is, you know, horizontal siding here. But again, we switched to, we switched to horizontal siding. And then the two sides of building two, here's where we took out.
There's a walkway in between, so we won't be able to see these ones right in there.
Exactly, right. Exactly. So there are some valpines that were removed from here, for example, because it's just an incident, it's a public valpines.
Garage access.
That's garage access. You're driving down this ramp and in the garage.
In there?
No, on that side.
So what is all that? Oh, that's garage access, maybe underneath the ground?
No, that's a parking garage.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
You won't see that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this is the walkway between the buildings right there. Everything below that is underground roof. It's, the model actually was cut, so you're seeing in the garage even though you won't be able to see it.
And you're also in the original drawing, this material went straight down, but then upward for this big garage door. So we made this look like those cheddar's and then you added on the cheddar above, so we just made it look actually a little bit more like it grew organic.
Yeah, otherwise this line can be right down to the middle of the whole.
No, it's, yeah.
Building three.
Dan had questions on building three last time, on the stairwell.
Yeah, so, so we were trying to solve the dumpster problem and we put the dumpster below grade at the parking level, right? So it's out of sight, we won't see it. The problem with that is when they drive down there to flip the dumpster into the truck over their heads. We can't put a roof over that part. And we were gonna have our building three enter over the top of where that dumpster sits. So because we couldn't do that and keep the dumpster where it was, there was no other place to put it, like, other than up on. On grade somewhere. We took the stair and flipped it to the other side, so we could enter the building on the other side, so.
That's why those were flipped?
Yeah.
I didn't have a good answer.
Really just so you can get access to the building without going over the top of the roof that covers those, so they couldn't grab more.
Fighting words management. You learn.
It's very imaginative.
Something else.
So we did expand this kind of porch-like element across the north side of building three. So there's additional masonry here and additional, like, overhead type doors that enter into the common space. And building three footprint actually got smaller on the second floor. We pushed a portion of it back in to align the third floor to align with the second floor. So building three, the volume got smaller on some floors, but not all floors, which in some ways is, is another volume increase. Uh, again, it was really done for planning reasons. We had a travel distance problem. There's only one stair in building three, so with one stair, you have limited, limited the distance you can go to get to your exit. Doesn't apply to the first floor because you're at grade. It applies to second and third, so we had to make the second floor more. This is, uh, this is the side facing the dumpster of building three, so that, that's a butt building to you, once you get as much. This is the other side with the stair foot over.
Showing the grade catching back.
Correct, yeah, that's right. That would point south to the. So, I mean, I have a lot of possibilities. You know, we can talk about it longer. I know Kendra has. So what questions do you have?
Still just chewing on it. I mean, I, I think that for me, I'd like to see what we approved versus what we got. I, I thank you for that walkthrough. Right, so I, I think that just acknowledging those shifts in addition to the three feet, yeah.
And then three feet, you know, is probably only over, maybe just a stair, you know, maybe twenty percent of the roof. Because it's really just where the large gables are, which are only on the railroad side. All the outside pieces are all flat roof. So they didn't grow. And even the center portions of the railroad side didn't grow because they're not large gable bays. It's just those two end conditions. So it's a small, relatively small percentage.
Can we talk about that? Am I the only one that?
No, you don't like that.
Dan, you want?
What was that, what you pointed out?
Yeah.
This little duck bill?
Honestly, I have a barn on my property and it has the little duck bill, quote unquote. Those are very popular. Yeah, they, I have a probably things out, it goes out. That, that's an added detail that is like, that, that makes it more, uh, less boxy, less square. It adds character to it. I didn't see anything wrong with it. If you have an opinion that, that historically accurate, it is.
We're just trying to add some eccentricities to make the project more interesting and more conversation with these questions about us. But it could, it's not integral to the project. We could do something else.
It's not a bad one. I'm just like, I.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
From this angle, I don't like it.
Yeah.
No, when you won't, you rarely see it from that angle.
Yeah.
Especially when you look up at a barn or looking at an angle, it does kind of like cone out really nice.
It's an extra detail. I was even gonna try and find a historic pulley system to hang there, just, just for detail.
Yeah.
And, and they, on the face of it, they put in, uh, barn doors, so it would look like that's where you. Exactly. It's more, because that's, that, that elevation you're gonna see.
Yes, on this end, yes.
And that's why we added that extra wood effect.
Anything else, Dan? No, I don't think I have anything else.
I said I didn't want to talk windows, but now I have another question, um, because we spent, we spent all of the last meeting, we put six into what we were looking for. And I have not gone through this to see if what we asked for is endowable here, and I want to be clear that is or is not.
So the casings will be proud of the siding, like you requested. We have two different casing sizes, a little narrower for the vertical siding, a little wider for the, uh, horizontal siding. We'll have full brick sills. We'll have, you know, fiber cement sills to extend out.
Brick sills were being, right.
Right, yeah. Right. And we'll have fiber cement sills that extend out beyond the siding, where we have fiber cement. I think we understood all the comments that were implemented, right? And I think in part, you know, our blocks that were inserted in the drawing with the CAD power was just.
That one section that we pulled out there looked like it was gonna, the water was gonna go behind the flashing.
Yeah.
He's saying that that was just a CAD issue.
We imported like pre-drawn block into the drawing, you know, but if the block is not selected properly, it doesn't actually just line up.
Especially not with the new air to protect the wall. But it continues on insulation, so the manufacturer still has to keep up. Uh, they're updating depending because there are so many different conditions, so. Now we have found and we exploded it and made sure that it's extended, that, I mean, no one would build it that way, but now it's, uh, it was wrong. Yes, it was wrong, so thank you.
And that will be in the building permit approval that the zoning board will see, not this section of it?
That will be in the final construction drawings that will be approved by Bergman that they're working on now.
Okay. I'm only asking that to put it on the record for Tina, which is not here today.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, what Tina's recommendations were that were put in the meeting minutes.
Yep.
They're incorporating it into the latest drawings.
Very good. The parlex, you know I was gonna ask about that. Is that the same stuff that you presented to us last fall? When, for natural wood? Or is that new since the approval of the C of A?
It's not new. I don't know. I don't remember what it was last.
I thought I brought a piece in with me.
Right, but I, I've never heard of it, uh, being called parlex.
That's a brand name, that's a brand name.
Natural wood.
Yeah, so it's a.
And then with your description earlier, I was, I was kind of throwing.
It's a resinous product that they put, you know.
Plastic.
Well, they do it a couple of different ways. So it's either made of all these paper layers of resin or.
Resin plastic.
But then they put a film on the front. The one we're looking at actually has a very, very slight texture to it as well. And the color is integral to that film that's in there.
Right.
We can bring a sample back at some point, but I don't know.
It's very, very expensive. It's more expensive than wood.
Yeah.
But it will last.
And there's parlex, there's stronger mags, there's dress leather. There's a number of different manufacturers that make similar products. It's just a matter of choosing the one that has the same technology.
And how you kind of, oh, it's nice to tell you another picture. Uh, I think it's wooden. So it's like, if you just remember it now, but.
Yeah.
That one is the most realistic, but, uh, and the longevity wise, and in some areas where we go here, actually, it will feel more like, um, actual.
Well, if it's the same stuff that we approved, I'm fine with it. If, if it's different and it's been changed since the C of A, then I'd like to see some of it too.
Right, well, it'll be the same as what you approved or make, make sure you see it, yeah.
Six thirteen, no.
Okay, anything else, Dan? Uh, no, Bill?
Nothing, no.
Ken?
Am I supposed to read anything from online?
I'm sure.
Is this public where I'm supposed to read something from online? No?
Yeah, I think, uh, seeing this has been extremely helpful when I spent a lot of time going through these color coding things and sorting through it. And I appreciate your, your little grid. I'm hoping I'd see something like this.
Yeah, I just wanted to, for myself, to understand too, you know, how substantial these teams are, things are.
Right, right.
Because.
And the only other comment I have is that, you know, future ones, we, we go into this, this is a lot helpful, more helpful than that. I mean, obviously, you know, to start somewhere.
I mean, at this point, we are really close, so I would not anticipate any original changes of this building, building four, five and six.
Yeah.
The plans are in for these first three buildings. As we get that completed and start construction, they're gonna continue work on the next building, so.
Well, and respectfully, we didn't expect any changes from the original C of A until here. So I would have appreciated a heads up, especially when Dan at our last meeting was pointing out very obvious things that had changed. And we didn't even get the courtesy of a, oh, yeah, what happened? Because it wasn't the windows that we were all expecting. It's, it's the mass and scale that our entire community has been concerned about, pretty much is what.
No, you're right. I think, you know, we recognize that some of these things were happening. We don't see them as substantial, but it's not for us to say. And there are differences. We always do the building to draw through the wall, you know, as you move from this to this. And like I said, we're making every effort to make those evolutionary changes better as opposed to worse, but.
The priorities, you want them worse, like that would be silly. Uh, that would be silly, but.
Sometimes, you know, your structural theory, but can't you blame the end here?
So my comment on this would be as we go and look at those, those other buildings, we go along and say, you know, by the way, we reversed these.
Yeah.
This is the new fire, you know, the stairway.
Total sense, I, I agree.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine. So I'd like to make a motion to accept, uh, these plans as provided.
I, I would make a motion to, and then to take it further, to approve the changes to the one. Perfect.
You got that?
Yes. Before we forward, send us a question, um, because again, this isn't just subjective or our, you know, regulatory place that almost checked me, but wasn't even asked.
Right.
That you asked for forgiveness, not permission from, right, that's what happened here. Um, so is there another process for that? Given that you're still working and you said there's the final plan, they're ready to do this for you. Is there any more wiggle room or changes are gonna happen that we're not gonna know about and then come back here again, or we need a final stopping round, like this is it?
What I'm getting is that they want approval for what they have on the table.
No, we don't anticipate any more changes.
So if there are more changes, we will have to connect, you have to go from one.
There will be no more changes.
But we haven't gotten the final comments from, from Bergman yet.
Right.
That's why Chris was like, that was a bold statement, no more.
We're waiting for the final comment.
An outdoor group forces us to.
Bergman has had the plans for two months now. We've been waiting for comments so that we can make the final changes.
Nothing that they say should really drive changes to the X two, I think.
So what it does.
It comes back.
We got it.
And so, so why do we meet today?
Because they're not anticipating any more change.
Correct.
And we, we have plans on the table.
Yeah. And our construction documents now are almost, almost complete, so it's the right time. Like Chris said, if, if Bergman comes back and says, there's an issue here, and what we wrote, we'll find out. That's right, come be with us.
It was a joke.
I'm gonna make the Lego joke, like there's no more changes because now the Lego cat bricks are the right size.
Right, right.
So that's why I kind of worked it.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'm gonna fill a little second, Ed.
Bill?
I'll second.
All right.
All right, member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Evans?
Yes.
Member McBride?
Yes.
Chair Pauling?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So you guys have great direction on any future.
We do, yeah, it's weird. And, uh, yeah, we'll be back for a few of those, but easily we'll see.
And, 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 uh, I'd make a motion that we, at the meeting.
My second. Okay, so we're definitely not doing the minutes from the last meeting. We're going to be seventy-five in a row, okay? All right, so member Olson?
Uh, yes.
Member McBride?
Yes.
Member Evans?
Yes.
Next up, next up, when are you going to convene with the board to approve this? Oh, you have to prove it, so okay, fine, go ahead. Say that again?
When will this board convene to approve those minutes? But we'll have to convene again to approve this meeting's minutes. So there will have to be some, when that's sad.
No, no, any board can approve any.
Well, that's sad. Do you have enough time?
I hope we go.
So I continue with the low down reason.
Okay, so Chair Pauling? Okay, motion passes.
Two or three people voted for it anyway, so.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your staying a little later too.